Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Johnson. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and petition by Senator.
Wow, I got a promotion. You weren't supposed to announce it, Pete.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got me all choked up. I don't know if I can go. Actually, we're in the season of celebrations. Hanukkah just ended last night, so we hope all who participated and followed the faith and enjoyed those happenings had a good Hanukkah season. We have Christmas coming up, and for those who celebrate Christmas and other holidays, we wish the best for those, but especially for December 31st into January 1st and a new year. And even though it's just another day, it does mark an opportunity for all of us to reflect on the past as well as take a look at the future and make goals and work together toward those goals to make Omaha a better city. Thank you.
An affidavit application is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Remarks on our various items we have today. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least turn them to vibrate. First, we have a presentation today and a proclamation to be read by Councilmember Bagley that recognizes the 125th anniversary of the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Whereas in 1896, after roughly 65 stagehands working in the theaters and music halls in Omaha, Council Bluffs, Fremont, and Lincoln organized into a union, the National Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees granted a local union charter assigning them the number 42. And by May of 1899, the local held contracts in Omaha with the Creighton Orpheum Theater, the Tor Sidero, the Nebraska Music Hall Boyd's Theater, and the Bayou Theater. And whereas in August 1902, with the addition of the Canadian Stagehands Union, the union became international and the name was formally changed at the convention to the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. And whereas in 1908, in order to facilitate efficient administration under an increased workload, members in Lincoln were chartered into the separate local union number 151 and local union number 343, was chartered to cover cinema projectionists before merging with local 42. And whereas in December 2017, local 42 acquired an official home base for the first time, having purchased a Nebraska State AFL-CIO building located in South Omaha. And whereas the IATSE Local 42 currently represents 182 proud members and celebrates 125 years of struggles, sacrifice, and service, positively impacting the communities their members live and work in. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Omaha, do hereby proclaim Monday, December 6, 2021, as International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this seventh day of December 2021.
I believe we have Ms. Stark here. Do you want to come on down and please, the podium is yours, if you'd like to have any remarks, and then Councilmember Bagley can present the proclamation to you.
Thank you, Destiny Stark, 11412 T Circle. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Bagley, and all our fellow council members. Thank you for your time that you spent on the proclamation and acknowledging our contributions to the city. This is our business agent, Billy.
Hi, Bill Lee, 2302 Victoria Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska. Business agent for local 42. Thank you very much.
Should I go around? Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance to rezon property located at 505 South at 90th Street from R1 District to R2 District, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on vote on number six is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to rezon property located at 655 North 108th Avenue from R8 District to CC District, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Douglas Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant who's here via Zoom to answer any questions you may have. This is basically taking the Sheraton Hotel back to the hotel zoning. We had proposed, we'd change the zoning for an assisted living project, and it's been decided to turn it back to a hotel instead. So with that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it is interesting that I kind of followed this, the transaction on this, and knowing that initially it was, as Mr. Dreeson said, was going to be, or did get rezoned so that it could accommodate assist, or senior living. And then I think it's a good indication about our economy that, that we see there's still the need for hospitality and the hotels are starting to come back. And especially in, you know, on kind of West Omaha, we don't have too many full-service hotels. So I'm excited about the prospect that this will be added back to the inventory of, for hospitality.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item eight, an ordinance to rezon property located at 13319 Cotner Street from R2 District to R4 District, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Proponent, Mick McGuire, Straitland Design. I'm a designer for the applicant. I'm here on their behalf to answer any questions.
And your address, too?
163, 163 55 Pine Street.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item nine, an ordinance to rezon property located at 1812 Sailor Street from GI District to R5 District, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an ordinance to rezon property located at 4907 Underwood Avenue from R8 District to MBD District, planning board and planning department recommend approval. Bees communication.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Amanda Schnatz. I'm the designer. My address is 3624 Farnham Street, and I'm here in attendance with the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Okay. Are you a proponent?
Proponent, yeah.
Yep. You can just put that piece of paper there on the, on the little daisies there. There should be a little arm that pops up. I can't see it from here. There you go. Yep, yep.
Set it up and paper on. Put it on sideways because. Oh. Apologies. Roll it up and it's starting to stick. What's the steel hold up?
Yep. You can see it. You just might want to press the button on top to scope out a little bit. Yep.
This?
Yep.
There. There we go.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Name and address.
Name and address, Lucas Thode, 3727 North 108th Street. Appearing as a proponent, we have a couple of suggestions for improvement. It's a good building overall, but I spot a couple of things that may have been missed initially, one on access and one on egress. First off, access. Building does not have an elevator, as far as I can tell as it stands. Please let me know if I'm wrong. It has more than four apartments in it. So, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, the first floor with dwelling units is a covered residential floor. And that, and that first floor dwelling unit is the second floor, which has no accessible route to it. Oops. Couple ways to fix this. One, we'll be putting an elevator, kind of suggesting that back beside the stair tower about here would be a reasonable location for it. Could go somewhere else, but that seems to be as reasonable a place to put it as any. Or, if you don't want to do an elevator, you could do it up to the second floor, all floors. You could put apartment in the back half of the longer, sort of deeper, first floor wing. And have that be the accessible unit. And the other is egress. Currently, four-story building, less than four apartments per floor, single egress means upper floors. This is fine under NFPA 101 rules. However, the equivalent egress rules in the International Building Code don't allow that fourth-floor apartment to have a single means of egress. So, the idea would be that I had to solve this, unless you're getting away from building for their approvals, would be to add an exterior staircase down from the sort of patio on the forefront of the fourth floor, the rooftop deck there, down, down, and then down along the building. From the, where the stair tower, the external stair tower, discharges on sort of the roof of the lower wing, and then down to the ground level. And there, that takes care of your, that抵你的second means of egress. You can fireproof steel appropriately, put the fire-resistant roofing, roof underneath, all that that. And yeah, this is a good building. It's got a nice urban form to it. It's the next increment for the site. It kind of actually makes me think of what, what your grandparents would have built here, had they been doing this, which is not a bad thing. And overall, good choice of materials, and I think it really fits the neighborhood in terms of what it's trying to do as a building. And that will be it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing's closed. I may have just a few follow-up questions for you, Amanda, if you're available. So this is in the Dundee area, right on the border of both my district and Councilmember Bagley's district. And as you know, we worked real hard in the Dundee Business District several years ago to renovate that business district and also at the same time adopted a zoning overlay, one of the first in the city, the NCE overlay, that I think has provided for some of the design we're talking about here today. So maybe, this might also be a question for Mr. Fanslaw, but in terms of height and appearance and material, is your all in compliance with that NCE overlay, right, in this proposition?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. I'll ask him that question, too, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. But first, can you speak a little bit to the operations here? So it is a little bit closer to the neighborhood than some of the rest of the business district. So I had to have some questions about hours of operation, the parking, how will trash be handled, those kind of things?
Yep. Yeah, those are all great questions, and I have some. I'll put some up on the projector here. The last city council meeting that we met at, some of the same issues were brought up in terms of parking and also trash in particular. There were some other neighborhood dwellers, I guess, neighborhood residents, that also were curious about some of the hours of operation. And I know that the, the owners of the tenants that will be occupying the building are kind of working with the neighborhood in terms of making sure that their hours are not coinciding with, you know, any sort of quiet time hours that the neighborhood might have established. In terms of parking, we do provide a driveway on the east side of the property that would allow tenants of the apartments to access the existing parking lot in the back. And so parking for the tenants of the apartments would be accommodated through the zoning requirements. And then there is some existing street parking as well that would be available for the retail. In terms of trash, too, I know that the owners are currently working with waste management to see what some of their options are. Our initial thought is that dumpster or rollable trash would be located in the back area off of the main streetway.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you have a visual, don't you, with you, that can show the?
I do, yep. And this might be a little bit updated from the last that you've seen. We'd have added some more context to this rendering to kind of give, give a little bit more understanding of the contextual, the neighborhood surrounding the building.
Okay. And any confirmed tenants on the, on the first floor there, or what's the idea in terms of what would be offered there?
Hi. AJ McClay, 7630 Pacific Street. I'm one of the co-developers of the project. As far as tenancy goes, we have a few prospects in mind, but we haven't signed anything yet, and we haven't moved that forward in terms of operators. But ideally, we're going to target more restaurant, retail, I think is what we're looking for in that. But nothing solidified yet, but likely under the bakery, coffee shop, kind of lighter fare, I think, is what we're looking at from that, and then possible retail. And Scott, who owns one half, he'll have one bay, I'll have the other bay. I think he does have somebody in mind, but I don't want to speak for him unless he's kind of solidified that. But our goal is not to bring in anything that would be bar-like or late-night, but it's probably going to stay within the lunch-to-dinner range is probably what we're aiming for.
Yep, sounds good. And then can you address the questions that just came up about access and egress and the need for an elevator or not? I'm sure that's something you analyzed in your work, right?
Yeah, so we are kind of starting our initial code reviews on this. Obviously, the first step is to make sure that we can do what we want to do on the site here, and at that point, we'll, we'll start to get in and address those egress issues that were mentioned.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Mr. Fanslaw, can you just confirm those things, too? It's all consistent with the NCE overlay and?
Sure. Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Yeah, our initial review of the rezoning proposal is that it's in conformance, and we'll continue to make sure that it is through the building permit process. The NCE for Dundee talks about there's existing R8 zoning along that stretch of Underwood, and it says that those R8 properties should be rezoned to MBD to create that more neighborhood business district feel, so that's consistent with the plan as well.
Thank you. And then, Mr. McClay, this might be a question for you. My last question, the applicant is, I think it's called Gander Company, right? And owns, I think, this property, which used to be a residential property, but probably some other residential properties in the city, too. I think this is a separate issue, but we did receive some complaints from, I think, previous tenants. It doesn't necessarily apply to this rezoning, but it was a concern of mine to make sure that all your properties are registered under the property registry ordinance that is now city code. Can you confirm that?
To my knowledge, they are, and that's part of what our transition to a property management company has been doing, is making sure that those are all brought up to guidelines that we have set forth right now. It was a bit of a rough transition, and I know who you're talking about, and so I, I think we've got everybody transitioned and all the properties transitioned, or at least in the process of being transitioned into where they need to be. Many of them have been in very cosmetic overlay in terms of remodeling, so they haven't been in service quite yet. But that's the, to my knowledge, we are either in or in process of that.
Okay. I'd encourage you to do that, and in fact, that is city law, right?
Absolutely.
So that's the expectation.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'd be supportive of this. I can't make a motion, but I would, I would support one. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for property located at 1620 Clark Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezon this property from GC District to R6 District. Item 12, an ordinance to approve a PUR District in a GC District.
Public hearing and vote on numbers 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. Matthew Kavanaugh, 4324 Fort Street, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing Corporation here, the developer of this project. So this is half of a 25-unit affordable housing project for seniors and individuals with physical disabilities. It's been in front of the council a couple of times for TIF and land disposition, home funds from the city. So just here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, to consider a Class IK liquor license for Sierra Hall located at 5716 South 36th Street.
This item was postponed from our November 23rd meeting. The public hearing and vote are today. Proponents, please. I know we have someone by Zoom. Let's see. Mr. Vargas, are you on? Yes. Oh, Ms. Vargas. We'll take you off mute. Okay, you should be good there. If you want to say your name and address.
Noel Vargas, 5716 South 36th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107.
Great. Thank you. I'm here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Vargas, I just had a couple of questions for you. A couple of weeks ago, when this was on the agenda, we had some opposition, and it wasn't so much about your place of business, but it was with the parking. Can you tell me, have you reached out to the nearby business owners about the potential parking issues you would have with this rental hall?
Yes, we do have basically a parking next to our, our building and across the street, and then we do use, we have an agreement with the church next, next door. After 5:00 PM, we're allowed to use our parking.
Okay, good. Glad, glad you got ahold of them as well. So there's another parking lot to the northeast of you that is owned by a bar that, if I remember right, he stated there was parking issues there, and he was wondering what you were going to do to rectify that situation with maybe security, notifying people that they couldn't park there, or more importantly, just getting with him and making sure you guys are on the same page. What's your plan with security?
I can do that. I can contact him, but we also have security after every event, so I can also talk to the security and let the people know that we can no longer, I mean, use that parking. And we have signs all over our building which pertain to our, our areas of parking space.
Okay, that's enough about parking. So I appreciate it. Thanks for being here, and I wish you luck. Motion to approve.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, to consider a classy liquor license for wall-to-wall wine and spirits located at 12977 West Center Road.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Carroll. I'm Vice President, Wine and Spirits at Hy-Vee. I'm also Chief Operating Officer of Wall-to-Wall Wine and Spirits LLC.
And your address?
My address is 5820 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines, Iowa.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items number 15 through 19 were held on November 23rd. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 20 through 52 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, if you are a proponent or an opponent, and let us know for council members that we have applicants by Zoom for number 20, 21, 22, and 24.
I'm Deputy Chief Michelle Bang with the Omaha Police Department here for items 37 through 42. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Address 505 South 15th Street.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any others today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is in relation to items 31 and another one in regards to the Salvation Army. I'm going to take an opportunity to present something to you in writing. For inclusion into the public testimony on these items, mainly because they do do a lot of good, but I think we need to remember as we're watching them ring bells for people and collect money for people, that the two boards of government in our civic building today, neither one had a proclamation or a resolution in regards to December 7th. We have forgotten all those that died in Pearl Harbor and since, and maybe even before that. So I'd like you to maybe come forward next week with a resolution in, in regards to December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a good point, actually. Appreciate that. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none. Public hearing's closed. There's a motion and a second. I would just make two notes before we vote, that number 36 is the beginning of the Keystone Trail connection to Cunningham Lake, which is an important step. And then on number 52, I just wanted to note that on our agenda, including number 52, we have probably over $250 million worth of refinancing of city bonds. So I want folks to know that that's something we talk about and have talked about this morning with numbers that large, but see it as a routine and very positive thing that the finance department has executed to refinance our bonds and therefore save taxpayers money. Mr. Harding, are you recognized?
Yep. My memory, and I believe we also received our newest ratings from both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, which show the health of, the fiscal health of our city, which, which allows the taxpayers as we go to refinance, refinance these bonds to save the taxpayers' money.
That's right. Good news today. Now for the lights, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 53, an ordinance awarding a contract to First Star Fiber Inc. for the Omaha Mixed Recyclables Processing 2022-2031 Project Alternate 2, with an estimated year one cost of $2,400,000. Bees communication and support.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wait for that to turn on. So first things first, I want to encourage everyone to continue to recycle in the city of Omaha. It's very, very important that we do that. But what we have in front of us is a bid. that we do that. But what we have in front of us is a bid, which I believe isn't the lowest based on the, the 10-year numbers. And of course, for some reason, we decided not to take the 10-year numbers. And it was decided that because of a, an error, I would call it a minor error, of the 72 pages that were turned in on the bid, that we're not going to have a competitive bidding. We're not going to have competitive bidding for this. We're going to, we're going to pick the company who, just a year ago, the same exact people wanted us to pick the other company. And that's fine. But what I do know is it's not the lowest. I'm not going to argue that it's the best. They both can fulfill the job. I've been to both places. And not to simplify it, but it's, it's sort of like trash. You take it out, your recyclable cart, and you go wherever you go, and you come back home, and you want it gone. It gets picked up, it gets take, it gets taken to a recyclable center. It gets sorted. And then it's just like a commodity market where it's sold. And both of these businesses know very well how to get the most money out of these products. So I know it's a lot more technical than that, but honestly, that's what it is. Use the cart, the cart's gone, and this product is gone, and it recyclable, it's all recyclable, and it's good. But what I do know is the, the contract from the one company, NebraskaLand, we were getting a rebate from, or at least money back in the bid. And the one that we're selecting, First Star Fiber, we would be paying them to pick up materials. So when I say it's not the lowest, it's not the lowest. So if you listened up next week, or last week, or two weeks ago, you heard everything I had to say. Mr. Tyler, thanks for all your hard work. Again, we worked a long, long time on this waste hauling, recyclable hauling, the carts and everything else. It's just I, I find it very odd that we would be so adamant for a company, and then just a short time later. And, and keep in mind, this is a company who isn't having neighborhood complaints. Of course, the mayor and Public Works Director and everybody else signed off that they could do this job before. Now we're going to say because we're not going to select them, that their, their bid wasn't correct. And that's not true, because I read through all 72 pages, and it mirrored the bid we received before when we selected them. So I see there's other lights. I'll give somebody else a chance.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And I prefer to have facts on the record. If Bernard Inambash could come down, I would appreciate it.
Bernard Inambash, Deputy City Attorney, 1819 Farnham Street.
And could you please explain why the, the other bid was denied? I don't want it to be just on a minor, on a minor. And also state, did NebraskaLand appeal in, in any way? We, we deny, we didn't take the bid. And could you tell us the reasons, legal reasons? Because I want it to be, I want facts to be put on the record.
Certainly. And I, and I appreciate Mr. Palermo's comments, because I do think there, the bids are very similar, but I think there are some notable exceptions. And obviously, we have an established bid process. Our bid process requires that a number of bids be submitted with the bid in order to comply. And there's a process also established for addressing confidential documents. Many, many of our bids require submission of data, of information that people, the bidders would believe to be, should be held confidential. It's very common. And you have, I think, have seen, on September 28, there was a letter sent from Mr. Stube as the director indicating that this particular bid of NebraskaLand was noncompliant with the bid specs. And that's a decision that's ultimately made by the director from the department. But it was, I was involved in reviewing it to confirm whether or not, I believe there was a basis to say it was nonconforming. And I, and I concurred with the Public Works Department. And there's no question, before I get into the details, that the code does establish a process for an individual to appeal that. And that process, the appeals obviously come to the City Council, and ultimately, the City Council determines whether or not that bid was conforming. I know there was some talk about minor defects. That's language that, that applies to defects that are determined by the bid opening committee at the time the bids are opened. And obviously, we had some discussion about that a number of months ago, and there was an amendment made in that regard. As, as far as this particular rejection, it had to do with being noncompliant with the bid specifications as opposed to a, a minor defect or failure to have the proper bid security or something like that. And the basis for the rejection is stated in the letter. And again, there is no question that was, what was submitted by NebraskaLand a year ago and submitted this year are, they are fairly similar, but there are some noticeable differences. The Article 3 of the bid specs required a contract compliance report to be submitted with your bid. That was in this particular bid, which is different than the last one. The bid basically said, didn't provide it, indicated it was confidential, and didn't have it provided. Again, that is something that the bid specs required to be provided. Similarly, Article 29 required that financial information be submitted. Again, the response, again, different than the previous bid, was this information is confidential, and it wasn't submitted. And then there was one other that had a similar things. And if, to the extent that someone's concerned about confidential information, Article 17 details the process by which you can identify information as confidential and not have it released to the public. Now, we obviously, we sometimes take a look at that, because sometimes people attempt to identify things as confidential that we believe don't meet the standards. And if we have that case, we have that discussion. But in this particular case, the bid didn't have these items that were required. And I was asked to look at it by the Public Works Department. I don't recall if I was asked last time, to be frank with you. I don't think I was. And, and in reviewing it, it appeared that it did not have items that were needed to confirm with the bid specifications. So I concurred with the decision of the Public Works Department that the bid should be rejected. And again, as I mentioned previously, there is a catch-all provision to protect somebody, and that is ultimately, this council is the decider as to whether or not the bid is nonconforming. Mr. Brown chose not to bring that issue before the council. That's obviously his choice. But because of that, this particular bid from NebraskaLand could not be considered by the Public Works Department as it made its decision to award this particular contract. Happy to answer any more, more questions.
Well, and also, so what we have in front of us today is not being able to decide between the two. The only thing on our agenda that this council can decide on is whether or not to continue to recycle in the city of Omaha. And the only bid that we have would be with First Star on our agenda today.
Correct. The bid you have now would be to, to allow for recycling, starting January 1st, I believe, of next year on. Obviously, we currently have a, a contract for recycling, and I, that would continue. And I'm not to say that there couldn't be some discussion about continuing the current arrangements. If the council were to not approve this particular contract, there is no other compliant bid that could be awarded the contract, and the bidding process would start over. I mean, that's just the reality. And then the Public Works Department would have to see if they could contact FCC or pursue alternative arrangements to, to get somebody to, to do the recycling program, much like they've done for the past year, frankly.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your efforts. And Mr. Tyler, could I ask you to come down?
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works.
Thank you. I just want, again, to be clear, that, that, because I looked at the two bids, the only bid we have today is whether or not we're going to continue to recycle and, and use this bid. If we were to rebid, I think it would give people unfair advantages after we already see kind of what the, the bid is here. But there was a comment made that this contract clearly costs more than NebraskaLand's. And when you showed us the two bids last, two weeks ago, clearly, it looked like they were, it cost almost the same. It's just that one company charged more on one end and less on another, and the other company just flipped them. So on average, actually, the cost to the taxpayer would be close to the same. Is that correct?
So, so our analysis, just depending on where the recycling markets were at, okay, one bid was much better on the low end, one, one bid was much better on the high end. Those markets are actually coming down right now. So we're protected on the low end with, with the current bid that's out there.
So the current contract actually is more beneficial to us in this current market?
No, let, let me restate that.
Correct.
Right now, the markets are, are good. They are trending down. They're down even in the last couple of weeks from what we saw. But they're still good. Okay? They're still kind of on the high end. However, for a few years, they were well on the low end. And we are much better protected on the low end by the bid from First Star than we are from the bid we had to reject.
Okay. And, and I just kind of wanted to be clear on that. There's, essentially, though, there's not a whole lot of difference, and it's really market dependent. Is that correct?
I think market dependence is a very good way to express it. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tyler. I appreciate that. Nothing further. I just wanted to make those, those things clear.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and that's exactly right. We have one thing in front of us. Due to the way the, the bids were dissected when they were opened, and for the longest time at the city, it was always lowest and best. It did not matter. That's all we were drilled in, lowest and best, lowest and best. And sometimes bids are all rejected and they rebid. But what happened a few months ago, on the record, so this is factual, we had a company that we wanted, but they didn't submit the proper bid. And back to the beginning of time, it would have always been rejected. And so what happened was, we made an amendment, and I don't remember, because I don't have it in front of me. It's like 10 dash 110. But we do have the city attorney here who would tell me what that number was and what date that amendment was made, that from that point on, it changed things for me. If you could tell me, Mr. Cousy.
Matt Cousy, City Attorney. I told you that two weeks ago. I do.
I was pretty close. I'm.
You are pretty close. The amendment, I believe, was sometime in May, proposed by yourself and Councilman Festerson to clear up the language about what a minor defect is and what is not a minor defect. If I recall, the specific issue addressed in that amendment to the ordinance dealt with checks, business checks, being an issue for submitting bids. And now Bernard's heading my way. I was also close. It was not May, but it was July of 2021.
So, and to be clear, Mr. Goobles, First Star Fiber, you're, you're going to do a great job. It's just disappointing when, as we heard from law on the record, the, the bids mirrored each other. To me, what I believe, as I sat them out, the only difference is there wasn't a recommendation from the mayor and the department head this time. That was a difference in the bids. And one was clearly less. I don't care if it's a dollar less. It's less. And, and we've shown, this provider could do the work. Now, why didn't he, why isn't he here protesting this? Because he's like other city contractors. He may get another city contract. Does he want to jeopardize this one? No, he's fine with it. He, he's not up here telling me what to say and mad about it. He, he probably doesn't want me to say anything. But it is a small business in my district, and these are the people we, we stand up for. And if not, then we're not doing our job. And for all those people that, I shouldn't say all those people, for them, a couple of people that sent me an email saying to make sure and pick First Star Fiber, I read through, again, the letters back and forth, the correspondence, when recycling this town was in jeopardy, when the markets crashed. Is everybody listening? The markets were not good, and recycling, a fact on the record, was in jeopardy in this town. Because the provider we're going to award this contract to said, I'm not going to do it for that price, even though the municipalities around us, he was going to charge less to. These are facts. I'm not asking my colleagues to join me on this one. And we do have one in front of us that I'm not going to bid for. But sometimes you have to explain why you're not going to bid for something, or why you're not going to vote on something. And, and I'm telling you why I'm not. We had a company that came in, and in my opinion, brought the rates down for everybody in this city, did the job, and never had us pushed back in a corner on recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I thought you were up in front of me. I was just going to point out, I mean, I, I know we're talking kind of about a couple of different things at the same time. But in one instance, we had, the bid was submitted, it was, it was not opened. But they appealed, and it was, it was deemed to be a minor effect. And then it was open. And then it was considered. In this situation, we have a bid that was considered noncompliant or didn't meet, it was, it was not even considered. And it was not even then appealed to determine whether or not it was a minor defect, or there were minor defects where we could consider it. So it seems to be, at least in my mind, a moot point. If, and, and I'll, are you going to talk about the other one then? Or I was, I was going to say that I think the, the amendment that was passed then, this last summer, was already in place such that, that NebraskaLand could have, if, if they thought it was a, a minor technicality, then they could have made that appeal. But again, they didn't even make the appeal for us to even consider the bid.
Thank you. I would just add that, you know, I understand Councilman Palermo's frustration with this. It's been kind of a long, windy process, long, windy road. And, and it was involving a hard sell at the time, about a year ago, to go with a different contractor than was proposed today. But I think what this shows is that we did make the right decision at that time. By turning that down, I voted against that. I think there were some questions about the confidence level in the contractors in place that had been recommended. But I think now we're in a much better spot now in terms of a reduced price for our recycling processing with a contractor we know we have confidence in, and we know can do the work. And I think that's the right decision for our recycling program. I would, I will say, though, I want to thank Mr. Tyler for his work in the meantime. I know this has been a lot of work for him to make sure we do still maintain recycling in the community. And I think it, it is advantageous to have more than one recycler in the community when we do go to bid on these things, and to offer, also service other entities, not just the city of Omaha, but other businesses, other municipalities, other towns. So I appreciate the involvement of the other contractor as well. But I do think this is the right choice today. Motion a second. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 53 is approved, five to two. Item 54, in ordinance to approve a memorandum of understanding with Simtech to provide for increased shift differential pay for city maintenance foremen during the 2021-2022 winter season.
Vote on number 54 is today. There's motion a second. No lights. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 54 is approved, six to one. Item 55, in ordinance to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Public Employees Group, Local 251, to provide for increased shift differential pay for street maintenance employees during the 2021-2022 winter season.
The vote on number 55 is today. There's a motion and a second. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
So item 55, this is an understanding. It's an MOU with the, the men and women in 251 and street maintenance that are asked to work various shifts, pull them away from their families and holidays, in all sorts of weather conditions, obviously. So we know for the past few years, to incentivize employees in this department, we, we've given this shift differential. And maybe it's kept things steady, but it certainly hasn't helped shore up the problem we have with the number of people that are short in this particular department within Public Works. As we heard a couple of weeks ago, and, and maybe the numbers have changed, but I haven't heard any different. And I'm not seeing anybody from HR, so I'll just go with, oh, oh, Deb, don't, come on, come on down, Deb. Sorry, I didn't see you back there. Usually, you're sitting up there, but I'm not calling you up. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Come on up. Clarify, two weeks ago, you told me we were 66 people short in this particular department. Where, where do we sit today?
As of Monday, we, we have 49 total.
As of Monday, we have 49 total vacancies as of Monday.
Forty-nine vacancies?
Yes, we hired some people this past Monday, so nine.
Okay, that's great. I hope they work out. So, what we just approved was a shift differential for a class of employees that we heard two weeks ago were 100% staffed. And in the MOU, it said to keep them, for retaining them, and, you know, keeping everybody happy and making everything great. But they're 100% staffed. It's a different job, different pension, different work. Maybe it was necessary, maybe it wasn't, but I voted for it, just because. So if we just willingly, based on the differential we heard from pre-council, that possibly this one could cost the city $35,000 in a classification of employees that are 100% staffed. What we have in front of us now, with this amendment that I proposed, that I'm going to propose, hopefully, is that we are gonna give the management who are 100% staffed the same exact shift differential raise as the department that we've just heard are 49 employees short. Same shift differential, one department 100% staffed, the other 49 short. It doesn't add up. HR has worked really hard. And look, we can hear the excuses all day long. MED's stealing our employees, OBD's stealing our employees. They've been around for 100 years. They're not just, they just didn't start stealing our employees. The fact is, our employees at the city deserve more money, especially those that we know are called upon for exactly what this MOU says. So where am I getting at with all this? I'm asking for an extra dollar and 40 cents an hour for the shift differential for these employees in this bargaining group that are, they're 49 short. What does that equate to? About $140,000. We sit up here each and every week, and a lot of people in this city benefit. They're doing great. But along the way, we forgot about our own employees. We forgot that to make all of this work, we have to take care of our own. I heard this morning in Finance Committee, sales tax, doing great. Restaurant tax, yeah, we're still collecting that, doing great. Property tax, doing great. Wheel tax, doing great. Street and Highway Revenue Fund, doing great. Well, guess what? Let's help the city employees who aren't doing great. It's $140,000. We're gonna end this year with a huge chunk of money, like we always do, probably close to $10 million. So, to shore up this department that has continuous, if you heard me speak, you've heard me talk week after week about how many people were short. Well, today, I'm doing something about it. I'm gonna make an amendment to give them an extra dollar and 40 cents an hour, which, look, we know that the MOU on here at 360 is about $360,000. That's probably what everybody's gonna vote for, $360,000 that it's gonna cost all of us. I originally was gonna make it for a lot more, because I know there's a comp work study out there, and maybe you can't comment on this, that says these particular employees, they're already, because of the study, we've already found they deserve a lot more money, but we're just not there. And I thought I read somewhere, whatever I found out, it was about eight bucks more an hour. And we're just gonna say that, because it sounds really good. But it was about eight bucks an hour. So I'm not asking for eight bucks an hour for year-round. I'm asking for $5 an hour, which is only $1.40 more per hour for this time from Thanksgiving to Easter, I believe, roughly is what it is for shift differential. Now you say, "Why would we do this for, why wouldn't we do this for everybody?" Because every department's not 49 people short. Every department's not out there plowing your snow, and just before the snow, filling your potholes, which aren't gonna last anyway, because the plow's gonna make that disappear. We have a desperate need in this department to try to retain people. And the hard work that's went into it, it's just not working. And I will say on the record that if this amendment gets approved, and we didn't see a difference in numbers, I won't bring this back up again next year, but I would be failing the workers in our city that I know are short if I didn't bring this up. But Deb, I do have a question for you, and I apologize, I should answer it pre-council, but you probably know the number. I believe once a year, employees can transfer around to different departments after they've served so much time. Rough number, can you tell me how many employees have transferred out of street maintenance in the last year, or requested to transfer out of street maintenance?
We have request openings twice a year in March and in September, and there's approximately six or so. I don't have an exact number, that's an approximation.
Can you tell me how many people want to transfer into street maintenance?
We've not had any incoming into street maintenance.
Does everybody understand what I'm saying? That nobody wants to be in this department. Let's give them a reason to be in this department, and let's pay them for what they already should be paid based on this study. Again, it's necessary, it's necessary for the retainment to try to keep people so they can tell people to come fill these spots. And Deb, maybe you can't answer on the record, but I'm sure this would help you in HR, especially when people are applying to know that they would get an extra five bucks an hour. So, yeah, that's what I have to say on that. I could talk forever on what these employees are, what they should be paid, but we're not paying them that, so. Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, you're offering your amendment? Yeah, I'm gonna, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm gonna make a motion for the amendment. Do you have it, Madam Clerk? Yeah, there is. And this came from law, obviously, because it was drafted by them, so hopefully everybody had seen it. You didn't see it? Okay. Well, here, I'll let you see it before you vote on it. Anyway, a motion for this amendment for item 55 at $5 an hour for the 251 employees working the shift differential.
There's a motion and a second. And for clarification, the amendment would take four votes to pass. The item as amended would take five votes to pass. No further lights on the amendment? Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 55, the amendment is approved, four to three.
How about the item as amended?
As amended.
Motion to second. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three.
So realizing that that might occur on the four-three votes there, that item was not adopted. But what can still be done today would be the following procedure, should councilmembers wish. This item could be, we could have a motion to reconsider this item, it would require a second, from those that did not prevail, so that'd have to be Councilmembers Harding, Rowe, or Melton. And that would require four votes to pass. If we reconsidered at this meeting, we would then suspend the rules and have a vote on that, which requires five members to pass. And if that passes, then the motion could be made, and the item number 55 unamended could still be passed today and would require four votes, if it's the desire of the council to dispense of this issue today, and make sure that there is some differential payment that occurs to these workers.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a, is there a light or a question about that? Nope, okay. Mr. Palermo, your light's on?
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so everybody's listening, we're gonna approve $360,000 for shift differential, just like we did for the foreman. But there are people that don't think $1.40 an hour for these hard-working men and women at 251 is necessary. So what they're saying is 49 employees short, hopefully, that all those people that we just hired stay within the ranks of street maintenance is okay. These are the men and women who work on your roads every single day, not just in the winter. They're filling potholes in the summer, plowing snow in the winter. So keep in mind, everybody listening, we're going to, we have already approved and will pass $360,000, but we won't give another 140 to get to that $5 an hour for our city employees? I save money every week in here, and nobody listens. And now I want to put money into our employees? And nobody's listening again. Unbelievable.
No further lights on the motion to reconsider.
Actually, I've got my light on.
Do you? Mr. Harding.
I've got, actually, a question before a comment. So procedurally, I want to make sure that, so if we end up not passing this in some form today, what would be the process to bring that up at a future date?
The reconsideration is the process to bring it forth.
But if we reconsider it today, and it doesn't, and nothing happens, so that's my question is, is there a period of time for which we cannot bring it back?
Correct, yes. You could renew it, but there's a 60-day waiting period for that.
Okay.
All right. So I do want to say one thing about the differential pay that we're, that I hope we pass today. This went through the Human Relations Department. It went to the Personnel Board. I'm sorry, Human Resources, thank you. Went to the Personnel Board. It's a memorandum of understanding that was agreed to by the parties. There was no opposition from anyone at Personnel Board about the amount. And there wasn't any here today either. So I think it's, we do ask a lot of these employees, it takes a lot of time away from family. And that's why we're wanting to have this differential pay. So I'm hopeful that we're able to provide that additional pay for those shift employees, the shift differential for this period of time. And that's why I'll be supporting the reconsideration.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did have that wrote down here, but I didn't say it. But you're exactly right. The Personnel Board didn't do their job on seeing what these employees should be paid. HR is trying their hardest, but it's not working. The reason we are losing employees now is because of the wage difference. So this is another way to try to help the 49 people we're short, because I guarantee you're gonna hear it again. You've been hearing it for four years. You finally have me advocating on behalf of trying to do something different. So a year from now, we don't have to see, and don't get me wrong, we're never gonna get to zero. That's not possible. It's not, it's not the way the job works. But year after year, when there are this many people short? Ms. Sanders, I got a question for you. So people that are listening can understand this, how minimal this $1.40 is. You're 49 employees short in street maintenance. What happens to their budgeted positions? What happens to all that money that we would be paying if them employees were in place?
We would be paying salaries to those individuals if they were employed. So since you're short 49 people, those salaries are not being paid out. That money sits in the budget.
Thank you. So the money for these 49 people that aren't in the spots that they're budgeted for, it's sitting in the general budget. The money's in the general budget. The $1.40, the $1.40 is in the general budget. I'm not asking for $10 an hour more. I split the difference from that comprehensive wage study to what we were gonna give them automatically anyway. Forty-nine employees short, that money that's budgeted for these positions that aren't out working on your roads, the money's in the general budget. It's there, folks. It's there. I should be asking for more. Anyway, I'm not gonna have to respond to people on why I didn't try to give them more money. But people will, people up here will have to.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I, in looking at the work that HR has done to try to fix through the process of collective bargaining, I know you're still at the table, Deb. This issue has preceded several of us on this council from sitting, and it's been dealt with in the past. And I think Councilman Palermo's point that he made very clearly this morning and now is those 49 positions, there is not money coming out of the budget because you can't fill them. I think this is the third year, right, that we've had an MOU with Local 251 to raise that differential pay? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. The third year with Local 251, the second year for Simtech.
And the Councilman Palermo's point that I think he amplified very clearly is it's not working because the positions aren't being filled. So that's the reason why I supported his amendment to do that. And I will be supporting 55 as it's written before us today. But I know you're working hard trying to get those filled, but if, in understanding how the CIR works, that some positions are overpaid and some are underpaid. And this one, clearly, with the multiple years that you've had, dozens, it's fair to say I would characterize, dozens of vacant positions with street maintenance. So trying to fix that long-term, I get that's what you're trying to do, but that's why I supported Councilman Palermo on this, to really try to raise that up and to appreciate what the work the street maintenance people do during snow plowing. If it's a bad winter, they're gonna be out there working long hours. So I'll be supporting number 55 on our agenda to at least raise it for the 360 and hope that you have good luck at the bargaining table and try to get that problem fixed.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you might ask yourself, "Why is the president at 251 not here? Why was it okay for this MOU to be approved through these processes?" Well, because this is from me. This is from somebody who sits here knowing where the problems lie. We're not talking about police and fire and parks and sewer and traffic and law and tourism, everybody else. Those departments aren't having the issue. This came from me. This came from an amendment that I see necessary to help close this gap of openings. Now you know, on our agenda, we got hundreds of millions of dollars of stuff on here. And again, we find ourselves talking about the peanuts, $1.40 an hour. So that's why those people aren't here, and that's why it just kind of skipped along, because they didn't have somebody like me knowing where the problems lie. They lie in street maintenance. We need to do everything we possibly can to fill these spots. And if we're not doing it, then we failed, and we're not listening.
Thank you. There's a motion to reconsider and a second on the floor that requires four votes. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Pass, seven to zero.
Next, we would need a motion to suspend City Council Rule 10A that allows this to be reconsidered at this meeting. And this requires five votes to pass.
I mean.
Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
So the motion's back on the table, number 55 as proposed. Motion and a second. Mr. Palermo.
The reason I keep popping on this light, because I cannot drive this home enough, we're approving $360,000 for shift differential. I'm asking for 140 more. I've given you every single thing from revenue telling me we're in great shape to 49 budgeted spots that are back in the general budget. We just approved $35,000 for a department that's 100% filled. I can't stress this enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one concern. I think-
I think we're, my concern is about each of us getting involved in labor negotiations when we have people that do that, professional people that do that, and they're working to come up to the right numbers, and I'm gonna trust that they're gonna come up with the right wage numbers to fill those positions. And so I think, that's why I'm gonna support the three sixty, I think that makes sense, but I'm gonna limit it to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, for the lights, there's a motion and a second to approve number fifty-five, which should be the three six, three dollars and sixty cents per hour for differential pay. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item fifty-six, a resolution to request a bill be introduced to amend liquor license laws to bring private clubs under the bottle club statutes.
The public hearing for number fifty-six was closed. This was postponed from our November twenty-third meeting. The vote's today. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on the information that was discussed during our city council meeting two weeks ago, I'm not thoroughly convinced that this proposed bill to amend liquor license law to bring private clubs under the bottle club statutes, I'm not thoroughly convinced that this bill is something that we should move forward on. That's number one. Number two, the definition of bottle club, that would also bring us into looking at fraternities, professional organizations, and other number of organizations. And I don't think we've spent enough time to consider that and how that would impact other entities when we're trying to address this issue. And lastly, we decided during this meeting two weeks ago, city council meeting, since it was only four social clubs in Omaha, Nebraska, that was being impacted by this, that one of them happened to be in District Two, and I agreed to meet with that social club along with the BID, and at the same meeting, I denied or suggested that help was not needed from the Law Department, nor my colleague, Ms. Melton, for this meeting to happen in District Two. The person that was leading the charge of the BID, Ms. Goodwin, heard that was not in opposition during that meeting, that she would not attend if that were, if the Law Department and Ms. Melton did not attend the meeting, she was in compliance with that. When we reached out to her to have that meeting with the social club, to be neighborly, handle our own affairs, which is what community is all about, which is what the city should be all about, we should not present situations where we are creating an atmosphere of division. And right now, North Omaha, it would appear, based on decisions, conversations that are being made, that there is outside forces that is trying to divide North Omaha. We've had several meetings where constituents have come up to the mic and stated that they want it to be included in conversations that impacted their livelihoods, that they were taken aback, were somewhat remiss by other entities coming in North Omaha without asking what their needs are, but yet we still find ourselves in that same space where we're still debating what's best for North Omaha. On May eleventh, constituents voted me in office, and everybody does not have to agree with that decision, but I was voted in office to represent the constituents in District District Seven, District Six, District Five, District Four, District Three, District One representative were not voted on by residents in District Two to be their representative. If there is a concern about crime, concern about nuisance, then that's something that we, as a community, need to address. We should be given the opportunity to address it within District Two without making it larger than life. We also have an issue in District Two that has been going on for three years or longer regarding the homeless, panhandlers, so much so that I was involved in a meeting last Friday where the owners of, of the Holiday Inn were concerned about individuals being outside defecating, cussing, and making it very uncomfortable for their customers to have places to, to come and stay as guests in their hotels, as well as their employees feeling comfortable coming in. Now, those issues stem for, from outside issues, no control of the hotel. To what end do we blame or hold responsibility of what happens on the outside of an establishment to the owner? To what end do we do that? I see this social club in District Two having the same like situation as Holiday Inn. We have young folks in their cars outside of this social club that are congregating. Why? Because they have no other place to do the same thing in District Two. Do we need help in District Two? Yeah, we need help. How about helping us get places for young folks to hang out in District Two? As city, as city government, that's our responsibility to provide those tools for all residents. Want to deal with the real issue? Let's deal with that issue. Want to deal with the real issue? Let's deal with poverty issues in North Omaha. No jobs, food desert. Want to deal, want to help? How about deal with that? Why don't we put a bill on the table to deal with poverty? I don't hear any takers. With that being said, I will be voting this down. I move that this be voted down. Thank you.
Motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm assuming that dies for lack of a second.
I will second it.
Oh, you're seconding it? Okay. Okay. First of all, I want to state that this is not an issue, this legislative package item was not brought up because of one district. I mean, there are multiple businesses or clubs operating within this loophole that we know about all across the city. There's, I know there's at least one in my district as well, too. I think what we're trying to do is, is address an issue, a known problem of closing a loophole. And I had a discussion with, you know, some, some in the Law Department and, and our Law Enforcement Department as well, too, is that we know of, of, you know, many that operate today, but there are probably many that we don't even know about that are, that are in operation. So I think what we're trying to do is, is close a loophole for the entire city. This is not about one district. We are one city. Yes, we're elected by districts, but we all represent all of Omaha. As a matter of fact, in, in our, on our agenda later on today, on the first reading, is our redistricting for our districts for the next city election. There are constituents in District Six today that will be in District Five the next time around. There are constituents in District Two today that might be in District One next time. I mean, the premise, I, I think we, we need to make sure that we're not thinking in silos. We're a connected community. What happens in one district or in one area that shouldn't happen, shouldn't happen in any area. Conversely, something that happens that's a benefit in an area of town should happen in every area of town. I think we need to make sure that we're not so parochial in our thinking, that we're not moving the city together forward. This, again, is not about one district or one club. This is about closing a loophole for the benefit of the city of Omaha. One other thing. I don't know of a place in Omaha where we really need to be creating places to gather for our youth at three AM. I know where, where my parents thought I should be, where at three AM in the morning. I know where I want my kids to be at three AM in the morning.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I had no idea when I put this on, I, I met with somebody and realized that we had a problem in multiple clubs all over our city, and it was a problem that I addressed a few years ago with the unanimous support of the, the city council in regards to our problem. I know I worked with President Fetterston, also Councilman Jaram and myself, all worked on, on trying to get that bottle club bill passed. And so, and in fact, I think that there may be a lot of people operating, as Ms. Johnson alluded to, you do need liquor licenses for alcohols. In fact, fraternities actually need to get a liquor license if they're having a party where they're allowing anyone from the public. So I just want to make sure we aren't giving some bad legal advice out there. When I have my fundraiser at my church and no one's paying for the alcohol, I sign and pay for the liquor license for that. So many organizations, if you do have that and you're serving alcohol, you do have to get a liquor license to do so. And, and I did receive, Ms. Johnson, I did receive your email stating that I was not allowed to come to the meeting, and I didn't attempt to come. In fact, I, I was somewhere else this weekend anyway. But I did receive your email stating that I was not allowed to attend in the meeting as this is District Two, and I should not make myself a part of this because you stated that it should be this community. I just want to let you know, I am a part of this community. I believe the community is a citizen of the city of Omaha. I believe all seven of us up here are part of the same community. That's why I, that's why I ran for city council. And, you know, and it's not just next time. In less than thirty days, constituents who are in Mr. Fetterston's district are going to be in mine, or mine are gonna be in his, and there are constituents that are in yours that are now going to be in Mr. Bagley's, and Mr. Bagley's citizens are gonna be in yours and vice versa. With the new math that we have, there's, there's no way around that. And this is gonna be the, I can't remember, second or third redistricting since I, I started on the, on the council, it's two or three, because that's, that's what happens. So we should, we were elected, we were elected to represent the entire city, and we need to remember that. So I will, as I said in my, in my email to you, I am happy to meet with anyone. I renew my offer to meet with anyone in the city in regards to any kind of problems that they have, because what happens in one area of our city affects the entire city as a whole. When I volunteer my legal services, I certainly don't downstairs ask the tenants for the tenant assistance program what district they live in and then tell them I'm not gonna represent them because they're not in mine. I, I represent people from all over the city, and in fact, all over the county, and I will continue to do the same as a council member. Even in a lot of our districts, we represent people who don't live in the city limits. So people in SIDs call and have issues. I helped somebody with trying to stop a giant pole for a cellphone, cellphone tower pole that was going in on a golf course, just a giant hideous pole that we were able to move somewhere else. It benefited another school, we were able to work on that. They weren't technically my constituent, but people need help and people, I think, want us all to work together in order to get those things done for our city. So I look forward to working with all of you as we attempt to find balanced solutions for business owners, social club members, social club owners, residents in our city. I am sure that together we will be able to continue the progress and development that is occurring all over our city. And so I, I continue to, will continue to keep my door open, my phone line open to anybody in any district if they would like to call me. But in regards to the problems that have gone on in this area, we do need to do something. And I mean, passing, passing a legislative package goes to the legislature. I mean, we don't need the city council approval to do this, the Liquor Commission can, can get a senator to put it on there, so it doesn't have to be the, our city councils. This can be voted up or down. Either way, this can be accomplished anyway. But I just want to make sure we know that there was a citation issued because people inside the Los Diablos Club on November twenty-seventh of 2021, there were, there was a fight, there were at least fifty people outside. The fight started and occurred with people that were inside the club. I'm not sure how old the people in the club were, but this was at four o'clock in the morning, so any young people, I mean, I, I even think of my own twenty-one and twenty-eight year old, I still think of them as young and at least by four o'clock. I really do hope that they're back in their apartment in bed and hanging out, at least fighting and drinking somewhere. So I, I can't think of anywhere for young people to hang out at four in the morning anywhere out west, and I really do hope that young people will try and find their way home before four in the morning anywhere in our city. But there were numerous citations, there were at least fifty people outside, there was a noise, it was obviously disturbing to the neighbors. So, you know, I just, I am concerned for the neighbors that live in the area of at least this club, I'm concerned for the problems that exist, for the police with the multiple other clubs that they've, they've encountered in, in the city, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, if you do have an event and you do, are serving alcohol, you do need to get a liquor license currently. And so I hope that everybody else will just make sure they're doing the same. So if the council wants to deny this as part of our package, it really doesn't make any difference to me. I think this is what's needed in order to solve the problems for these bottle clubs, but I also know that the Liquor Commission is listening, and there are a number of other people in many different districts that feel the same, that can then go down and testify in front of the legislature without anyone's permission or vote to do so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Melton. As you are aware, all emails that are, that are delivered using the city email system is tracked. So let's be clear for the record. I, Ms. Johnson, did not send you an email telling you that you were not invited to come to the meeting that we were having, and you will not find any evidence that I sent you an email. What happened was... What happened was, two weeks ago, when we had a meeting here, right here, I said that I did not need that help at that time. And I have the right to state that. Ms. Goodwin, who denied coming after being invited to come, shared an email with you, including you, and went down that lane with you. And then you tagged me from that email about what your services could be. But I did not email you anything to indicate that you were not able to come to that meeting. That was decided here two weeks ago during the meeting. I made it very clear that I did not need help from you at that time, not doing an email. Pull up the records. Please do. And two weeks ago, it was four social clubs and today, many social clubs. How different two weeks makes? It's important that someone else speaks when I'm talking, but when you're talking and you can talk for a long period of time, because see, an argument consists of two people. There is, there is two sides to an argument, two sides. And just because you speak for 20 minutes on something does not negate what I said. It doesn't. And it's interesting how when I'm speaking, then all of a sudden, the conversation needs to be shut down, something else needs to happen, we need to vote or whatever. Be respectful of me when you're talking. I don't, I'm not making any of those comments that the conversation needs to be tapered off or we need to vote. Be respectful of me. That's all I'm asking. Be respectful of me when I ask to work things out in my district. Be respectful of me. I would be to you if you asked to be respectful to you when you wanted to work things out. If you had made a request to work things out in your district, I would be respectful to you. That's called teamwork. That's talk, that's called getting along. But instead, we favor someone that made an argument here in this room last week, then turned around and decided not to even attend a meeting in a neighborhood in which she feels so passionate about, but refused to even come and meet with the individuals that she was having a problem with. But she was so passionate about the problem, but not unwilling to come and have a conversation with the individuals to work it out. I find that very difficult to believe that someone would do that, especially when they're running a business improvement district. And also assessing this same club for fees for being a part of the business improvement I wonder how often she talks to the social club. Now that we have all of that out, my vote is still on the floor. I move that this is voted down. There has not been enough evidence presented that this needs to be a bill based upon two weeks ago, when it was entered, that there was only four social clubs involved. I was not present when the other city council member, Chris Jerem that you mentioned, and you had a discussion. I was not a part of that, no knowledge of it at all. Please help District Two by creating unity in District Two and not division in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had some questions, just for clarification on my own part. The way I understand this proposal, we're instructing, we would be instructing Jack, our city lobbyist, to take this bill for sponsorship by a state legislator, right?
Correct.
And then that would be passed by the state legislature. So wouldn't that, that's not going to just target the bottle clubs in the city of Omaha, right? Wouldn't that target bottle clubs in Kearney? Central City? Garing? It would impact all the bottle clubs across the state if it were to be passed by the 49 members of the legislature. And so I'm not sure I understand why the, why all the targeting toward business or District Two or District Six or wherever. I think it's a bigger, it's a, it's a statewide recommendation for Jack to say, and he might not find us a legislator to carry the water. Rich Pauls might tell him to pound sand, "I don't want to carry that. I don't know that." But that was, that's all we're asking him to do is just take it to the legislature and see if a bill could be introduced and discussed and talked about. We're not going to pass the bill here. It's not anything that we're going to do that's going to impact Los Diablos or Club Omaha. It doesn't, we're not going to be able to do that. That's got to come from the state through the liquor commission. So I'm, I'm going to vote for it. I just wanted to let you know why I, why I am. It's not anything to do with anything in Omaha. I think it's a statewide issue.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I got a question. I'll wake Matt up back there. Are you waking up back there, Matt?
Matt, because you're law department.
Matt, if we don't act on this today, a state senator can still prioritize this or make it their bill. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And this is a recommendation to our lobbyists, if we vote for this, to have the city lobby state senators to enact this, correct?
Your position would enable Mr. Chalua to act on behalf of the city in official capacity to lobby for the bills, arrange testimony on behalf of the bill and to essentially state to any senator who would ask Mr. Chalua affirmatively what the city's position is on a bill of this nature.
Thank you. So I sit on the law committee with my colleagues, Councilmember Palermo and Councilmember Melton, and we did have good discussions on this about 25th and Ames, the motorcycle club up there, Los Diablos. And there was good discussion, at least in this chamber, on people that came and testified outside of the young folks that come and congregate there after hours. So at this time, and I appreciate Councilmember Melton's work on this, I, I think her intentions are sincere. But I'm not going to support this just at this time because I think we can monitor this and if there are state senators that want to take it up and the liquor commission, as Councilmember Melton said, they can do that as well. But I, the one thing I'll say, I think in the, in the spirit of debate we had here today, that communication really is a key within neighborhood associations or BIDs. It's okay that people disagree, but there's got to be that communication, even if the person you're going to talk to, you're vehemently opposed to what they say. But the minute we have two ears in one mouth and we forget about one of them, we have trouble. So I, I really do appreciate the work that's been done on this. And, and again, I made my position clear, but I, I want to again stress that that communication with the sitting council member of the district within the BIDs or whoever, please communicate and make the effort to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion to deny in a second. Roll call.
This is to deny. Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Aye.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item fifty-
No, you may not. Next item, please.
Item 57, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement in the amount of $42,500 for the case of Michelle Suddles and Elijah Camaro versus Jeffrey Vaughn.
Public hearing and vote on number 57 are today.
Deputy Chief Michelle Bang, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'm here as a proponent and to answer any questions, should you have any?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any other proponents on number 57? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Aye.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 57 is approved, seven to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 58 through 60, ordinances to acquire private property for the Coal Creek CSO 202 Phase II, 70th Avenue and Spencer Street sewer separation project, Signal Infrastructure Phase C2 project and 2022 various Signal projects.
Public hearings on number 58, 59 and 60 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings are closed?
One public hearing can be held for items 61 through 63. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ordnances vacating the southern 100 feet of South 89th Street, the alley east of North 18th Street between Corby Street and Ohio Street and Madison Street from 20th Street.
Public hearings on numbers 61, 62 and 63 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 64, an ordinance to accept the bid from Alexander Lawn and Landscape Inc. for grounds maintenance at the street maintenance facilities in the amount of $23,026 for a period of one year.
Public hearing on number 64 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 65, an ordinance to accept the bids from Alexander Lawn and Landscape Inc., All Seasons Turf and Tree LLC and Chopper's Lawn Service for grounds maintenance mowing of city right-of-way.
Public hearing on number 65 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 66, an ordinance to accept the bid from Safety Guard Inc. for guard rail and fence repair not to exceed $50,000 for a period of one year.
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 67, an ordinance to approve and execute a cost participation agreement with the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission in an amount up to $800,000 for improvements in the right-of-way and on the property adjacent to the right-of-way.
Public hearing on number 67 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 68, an ordinance approving an interlocal agreement with the Omaha Council Bluffs Metropolitan Area Planning Agency for regional digital map products.
Public hearing on number 68 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 69, an ordinance to approve the Blackstone Square Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement in an amount up to $515,000.
Public hearing on number 69 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon. Bridgette Hadley, City Planning here to answer any questions you may have and developer is here as well.
Thank you.
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. Pretty exciting project in Blackstone, new retail forbays. Part of the TIF redevelopment agreement you all are proving today, $15,000 of those TIF funds are actually going to the, the Blackstone district, so future enhancements to the area. Exciting project, obviously the last stop, or step in the TIF process, so we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I used to live in this area and I've been driving by there for the last couple of months. I just find it very strange, I'm opposed to it, that the hole is already dug. I didn't walk down the street to see what address was exactly that address, but I see a big project going on there and there's a big hole in the ground already. Why does that happen before the vote? It seems like that happens with a lot of these TIF projects. And some of them say city participation, some of them don't. Citizen really doesn't understand all of this and they certainly wouldn't understand why you dig a hole before you have a vote for the resolution or the project. That just doesn't make any sense. And I'm going to take an opportunity to maybe be kicked out of the meeting here today. This is the, how many times do I have to-
I'm going to stop you right there, Larry. You're looking for opportunity.
But you're one of them that I can't hear most of the time. I have-
You got to stay on item number 69 or else we'll get you out of here, if that's your desire.
... in the afternoon. I do not understand the difference. Have trouble understanding what she's reading. Speak up to the microphone for God's sake. Maybe you'll have more citizens come down here. And by the way, the state website does say that they're changing some of the rules for public participation. So maybe you guys are going to have to change your rules because don't we have to follow state law?
All right. Thanks, Larry.
Uh-huh. Yeah. That means maybe, yeah, you could cut me down to five minutes or less at risk of being chewed out. But the intent on their page is-
So Larry, I'd prefer you sit down rather than get you thrown out.
Yes, more participation. Okay? More participation. They will not let us do this by email.
All right.
Anymore.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other opponents today on number 69?
It has to be in person. And by the way, I, I do not understand why a, thank you for your input, but why you do not call Ms. Johnson out of order and ask her to be escorted.
All right. Mr. Benson, I think we're done.
Okay, here you go. You're kicking me out. A citizen, goodbye.
That appears to be what you want, so there you have it.
Happy, happy December 7th.
I gave you several opportunities, Larry. Larry, you didn't take, but... Any other opponents today on number 69? All right. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized. My public hearing's closed.
Quick question. What, what's the time process from its, project has started, when do you think it'll be done?
So Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. We've actually been waiting to go any vertical, which is typical for all TIF projects. Sometimes you see some of that lower geotech, that type of work getting going. These particular buildings, there was a fire in 2018, so they came down. So there was some subsurface excavation, which might have been the holes that he was looking at. But vertical improvements, we're waiting until this council, in the event it approves it, then we will start going vertical. So we hope with weather, if it stays like this, we can start vertical in January, but most likely spring of 2022 completion and late 2022 as well.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that for everybody listening.
Sure.
When they get half statements from folks who want to come to the microphone, appreciate your explanation on that and wish you the best of luck in a, in a great district there in the middle of my district. So good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 70, an ordinance to approve the Habitat for Humanity 9 NAF Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement in an amount up to $1 million.
Public hearing on number 70 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. If, if I may, I just would like to, for the benefit of the public, answer a question that Mr. Store, thank you, asked about the, the language of city participation. That specific language is referenced in our TIF redevelopment project plan council documents on the cover letter. And so if you were to go to page 17 of this council agenda and look at either 82, item 82, 83, 84, go halfway down, it says, "and authorizes the city's participation through the allocation of TIF." So that's specific language for the resolutions and the, related to the TIF redevelopment project plans. When it comes to the agreements, which are the ordinances, there's different language used. So for the item before at 69 and for this item, it says, "the agreement authorizes the use of up to..." So just distinguishing, the language is, that same language he's looking for is only mentioned in our, cover letters of our resolution. So with that, just ask for your approval.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And to the question of why do, why does construction sometimes start to take place? It's on the developer's risk and anybody can do what they want with their property before an approval is actually given. Case in point would be Crossroads right now, which is totally demolished and prepped for development but not totally approved. Other proponents on this item?
Ken Marr-
Ken Marr, area director for Habitat for Humanity, 1701 North 24th Street. The construction of 26 new homes in the neighborhood, action in fact, for the construction year 2022.
Thank you. Any other proponents on this item? Okay, Ms. Hadley, one more time.
Sorry. Just to that point about construction, the law, community development law does allow certain typable cause, demolition being one, to occur before, beforehand, so before the approval. So that is a typable cause that by law is allowed.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 70? Seeing none, any, any opponents to number 70? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
These comments are not directed to any one individual, but if there is anyone who could not be here today for whatever reason, they can watch the replay of this and understand some of the questions that sometime get posed. The response from Ms. Hadley, which was very informative. And that way, those who want to know what the answers are to the questions can certainly get that by watching the replay of this.
Thank you. Next item.
One public hearing can be held for items 71 and 72. Item 71, an ordinance to approve a master health services agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska for health claim administrative services. Item 72, an ordinance to approve an addendum to the amended and restated prescription benefit services agreement to provide pharmacy benefit management services.
Public hearing on items number 71 and 72 are today. Proponents, please.
Deb Xander, Human Resources. I also have with me Kristin Cavell, who's our benefits manager. And we've done the RFP and the review for this, for both items, and we are asking for your approval and here to answer any questions you might have. We also have representatives from Hub International with us today. If you have questions for them, they can answer those as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Mr. President, is this item, did this get placed on an agenda because of the mayor or the bid process selecting it after that debate that happened in, regarding the, the minor defects on the check?
Yes, these are the city's healthcare benefits.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Next item.
Item 73, an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the Douglas-Sarpy Mutual Aid Interlocal Agreement to add the Village of Boystown.
Public hearing on number 73 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 74, an ordinance to authorize the dispersment from the fiscal year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Award to provide law enforcement and emergency response communities with enhanced capabilities to prevent exoterrorism.
Public hearing on number 74 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Parker.
Amber Parker, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Parnham Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 75, an ordinance to approve the special tax revenue redevelopment and refunding bonds, Series 2022A, and special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds taxable Series 2022B in the amount of $11 million.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 76, an ordinance to approve the special obligation refunding bonds, Riverfront Redevelopment Project, Series 2022C in the amount of $30 million.
Public hearing on number 76 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Non-action items, items 77 through 101 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:54.